And call me in order, I have pledge. Alright, do we have any public comments, Mr. Knott? I know you were on the list.
Yes, first of all, it's good to see a hundred percent attendance by type B. Thank you for taking your responsibilities seriously. Where is he?
I don't know.
Okay, let the record reflect that Gary Hahn is not here. Anyway, I'm here to thank you for your support of the Keene Chamber. We talked about the budget last time. Mr. Martin assured me that all the items that we're requesting are in your budget, so I didn't need to go over that. Just to thank you very much for your support of the Chamber and the programs that that leads to specifically the two parades, the fireworks show, our expo, and the flag program. So, thank you very much.
Thanks Paul.
Thank you.
I got a typo. Cardboard.
Breathe it real, breathe it real carefully.
I know.
Let the record also state just-
I put it in.
Let the record also state just because someone misses a four B board meeting does not mean they're not seriously dedicated to the board. I mean, sometimes they have other engagements like a conference or emergency work. What work? Thanks Paul, we appreciate you. You're always, you're always worth the price of admission. So, general, list A, review discussing since the fiscal year twenty-five economic development corporation type B board budget. Did you read Charles?
Oh yeah, I think we're good. Tag team this. Just want to get this back in front of you. There is one typo that may be a little bit misleading on the start of the budget, the personnel cost, that says EDC director. I know we talked previously about that position. This is actually the director of Development and Neighborhood Services, Don's position. That's a shared salary between A and B, which under that position also includes all the parks, maintenance, mowing, contract, etc. So, one of the big things I wanted to draw your attention is what we have built into this budget. But I want to first start by going over revenue side, so you know now, you know, what we're looking at. Right now, we're projecting about three hundred and fifty-four thousand in revenue for next year.
Mr. Mattel, you don't think we have that? You know we don't have that sheet?
We only have expenditures.
We just have expenditures.
You have expenditures, okay.
So, when you say that total was-
Three fifty-four. Now, that's a pretty conservative estimate. We have some sales tax that we think we're going to come in, you know, quite a bit higher, but we're just taking a kind of conservative approach on that. Okay, so that leaves sixty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen to the positive for your budget.
What was our budget last year?
Dinah, Dinah has that.
Our budget last year?
Yeah, expenses was minimal. It was three oh one.
So, we did three oh one last year roughly?
Yeah, three hundred and one thousand.
Thank you.
So, there's a couple of things to draw your attention that I needed to get your feedback on. As we move forward, I wanted to get this to y'all. Thank you for this special call meeting. That way, we can get it in front of council on the first. One of the big decisions is, you know, we, I'll give you the backstory. We went to a different mowing contractor. That did not work out too well. I ended up canceling that and immediately walked. So, we went month, you know, during the high season without growing. We hired the position and he's, he's getting caught up and it doesn't look bad, but it doesn't look a hundred percent yet, okay? So, the question for y'all is, we could continue to fund half of that park maintenance, facility maintenance position through A and B, which includes, you know, right now includes mowing, all the maintenance stuff that needs to be done at the park and here. That's our current situation. In this budget, we did build in both. If you wanted to execute a mowing contract to keep up with the park, if you feel that that needs to be kept up with better, and I have received some feedback, there is, you know, a lot of people that feel that way, we've built that into this budget. You just need to, I'd just like to get your feedback if you'd like to fund both or do away with that one position or, you know, we, we do have the money to do both, but it's, it's up to y'all.
Is that mowing contract including the pre-emergents, the weed kills, tree maintenance, tree trimming stuff?
Yes.
What about the, the ball fields? Does it include that?
So, there's some different line items just under it. It's line item sixty-one oh six. And if you'll, so we do have ten thousand built in for the ball field conditioner. And we want to do that professionally. And that's kind of the Band-Aid fix until we get the drainage issue fixed. Yesterday, we had a meeting about a grant that we're probably going to rank high on the list to get. And in that grant, we're going to do this study. We need the engineering and everything to get that runoff properly engineered. That way, we can come with all the completed plans and all that will hopefully pay for.
And will that include all of our parks and not everything connected? In the past, we were told that if we had like a master plan-
I think he's talking about a different grant specifically for the engineering part?
Yeah.
For that flood controller.
So, yes.
Did we get behind in the mowing this year because we did, one guy couldn't get it done?
Yes and no. We, we got behind, you know, we started the mowing season about a month early. Our, our contract didn't kick back up until I think it was May and it should have kicked up in April. Yeah. Anyway, gonna be careful how I say this enough, vendor. We were concerned about the quality and so we addressed that. Again, we thought we had four more weeks with them and when I gave them the notice, done. So, we had a whole month while we could spin up someone, you know, trying to, so yes, it got really far behind. We're still not anywhere close to caught up, you know, flower beds. I mean, there's just so much stuff we have to do still.
Let me ask in a different way. If we shifted the funds from a contract mower to another part-time, full-time FTE, would that help first? And then could they handle it with one and a half people or two people doing the park? Because there's things that aren't being done. The example would be a college of sixty-seven, there's a rock flower bed there with our, and that needs to be weed killed and maintained and, you know, we don't do it internally. We're gonna have to get a contract from someone to do it and it's gonna be a thousand dollars, I'm sure.
Yeah, yeah. Probably, probably, but, um, asterisk next to that. I think in this case, for the, the bank you get for the buck, it'd be much easier to contract that out, be done with it and then have that full-time position that keeps up with all the necessary maintenance. There's a ton of stuff. We've got a year's worth of stuff, you know, bringing in just maintenance-wise.
For the employee.
I guess opposite wise, would it be cheaper to go to a vendor or do, like Donnie said?
For the half position, it would be very slightly cheaper to do the half position. But I think we'd get more bank for the buck contracting here. I'm talking maybe five to ten thousand dollars cheaper.
And with the other contractor, did we end up overpaying them for the work that was done or did they?
No, we just paid them just the work.
I don't really understand why we got rid of Don's lawn service to start with. I mean, they were doing a good job, Morris.
Yeah.
This board didn't hook you there, huh?
Now, we are going to go back after quotes and we're going to heavily take into consideration, you know, prior work and, and the size of firm, the size of vendor. I'm gonna write that into the quote. We thought our vendor we had was a bigger company that could handle, handle all of that. But yeah, I, I was, I was happy with the lawn service, so that's definitely something we can look at if we, if y'all decide to fund a contract.
The only benefit that I see in having a full-time guy is November, December, January, February, guys working for us forty hours a week because there's nothing to do mowing wise. Where in the contract, we just lose those months. We're paying, obviously, we're paying that out in the months that we are. That, that's my concern is that, and looking at that, I can't wrap it around my mind how a guy with the right equipment, forty hours a week, can't keep that place.
That was my original justification for coming to y'all to say, hey, I think we can do this as a full-time position. For that very reason, because once growth season slows down, it slows down, right? So, he should be able, and, and once it ends, he should be able to keep up with other stuff. But, you know, I've just, I've received more critical feedback on this issue than any other issue in Keene.
That's because it got out of control. It got out of control, the grants got high on the park, that's why.
But I mean, still, they're, they're still not happy with the way it looks now. And I, you know, it's pretty well caught up on the park side. So, again, this is a, that's why I wanted to bring it to you, get your thoughts and which direction you need to go.
I'm getting from the city manager that he would rather contract it out, just because it makes your job easier or, I mean, you get more bank for the buck, he said, I mean-
I think so. I think it was kept up with better. And then, once we have the mowing issue, pre-emergent, pre-trimming, all of that taken care of, I think we could focus on the maintenance side.
So, does the maintenance of our park require half a time person through us?
It does because that, that's, that's maintaining, you know, again, City Hall, this area park. And they would still help with, you know, some of the mowing stuff. We have that capability. All the painting, all the vandalism that goes on up there, I think so.
See, one thing you gotta keep in mind too with a contractor, they're gonna have five or six guys like Frank Don's doing. Whereas if we had one or one and a half, if he's sick for three days or sick for one day or takes a vacation day, that's three days you're behind or just by having that, you know, one person.
I sort of felt like that with Don's Lawn Service, they had, that type of service anyway, they had sort of like a schedule of, they kept up with like up there at South College in sixty-seven. They, they knew what condition it was in, they maintained the plants. And the same thing over here. It was, they were all, it wasn't just something they might get to, which is sort of how I have felt about this. And I don't know that, that is just how I felt about it. So, that's sort of weird, but it's-
Well, now, you know, if, if you're uncomfortable with the maintenance position, I would say that we would need to make a correction in budget to fund for maintenance. Like, if we didn't have that position, we'd have to contract that out. You know, we would have to move a pretty fair amount of money over to handle necessary park maintenance.
I know it's been touched on. I think, uh, I think he was talking about it, but having that full-time person on, I agree. It would be, I feel like it'd be more beneficial having them doing miscellaneous items.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Doing miscellaneous items in the downtime, because it looks like we're gonna be paying a part-time person anyways on top of the mowing contract. And so, that looks like it's gonna exceed sixty thousand dollars right there.
Yeah, that's, and that's the big difference in this budget. That's the whole, you know, one of the primary reasons for this meeting. Do you want to fund the contract and a part-time position or, excuse me, half of a full-time position? Do you not want to fund the contract, hire someone over there? You see all the options and y'all have brought the options up.
Do you think-
What's that?
Do you think you can get a contract for everything we need for thirty-six seven eight hundred dollars?
Uh, I think that, um, I, I think it's easier to keep that position. Which one are you talking about?
Well, Dick, you have thirty-six eight and the two we determined vendor for park mowing contract. Did you get a bid already or is that just a number you picked from last year? I mean-
That is a number we had from our previous bid plus about ten percent.
Okay.
I know it's gonna come back higher.
It's gonna come back. Well, to argue from the other side of what I just argued, you've already said this many means times, we're not the taxpayers' bank. We do have good revenue. And if making the park a little better for the people who are paying the money to actually know our B board and we have it, it'd be different if we were dying and our budget had to cut, but we don't. So, if we can make the citizens like what they're seeing better by doing that, I don't see why we don't.
Yeah, obviously, we don't want to end up in the situation we had this past year.
Yeah.
What is that contract? Like, how many mows is that?
How many mows?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a good question. I'm gonna have to email you that.
It's twenty-one, it's twenty, it's twenty-six, twenty-eight, somewhere in that, somewhere in that.
So, if, if Don were to come back and they were the least expensive or the one we chose, I mean, we never had an issue with him. Maybe someone other one had an issue with him, but our park was always mowed.
Yeah.
It was always needed and maintained. I mean, there, I just don't-
We, we do not have to take the low bid. We can justify the quality, service availability, experience, etc. We have to take all that into consideration.
I would just like, if you're going to go out for a bid for mowing, that it includes everything, you know, for example, would be-
Including the sign up.
The sign and even, okay, here's another example. There's a sign, but on the opposite side of the street, we paid to have it landscaped as well and the median. And if you go to Cleaverne or Burleson or Alborado, they're all mowing the medians and we're not mowing the medians. Now, I told the paths we couldn't, but they can, so hopefully figure out how to do it.
I don't know why we couldn't. I think we could just get a letter from text on.
My point is, is I, I want everything cleared.
Yeah, okay. Makes sense. I do too.
I get those calls.
And are the lights on the City of Keene sign up there at South College in sixty-seven, are they operational? Does that sign live at night?
No.
So, what can we do about that?
That was three years ago. You were getting bids on that.
Yeah, I did get some bids, but some of those companies are wrong or something.
Why don't we just call an electrician and have them go fix it? That's in a maintenance budget somewhere, I mean.
Yeah.
Are there lights?
Yes.
Yeah, but I think they're all destroyed.
They're in ground. I think-
Conneeds been broken, wires, we probably have, Paul, have to be reconnected.
I think you and I could go to Home Depot shop and fix that in half.
Come on.
Sorry, I wasn't aware of that. Okay, well, so-
Do we keep the half-time position over?
Yeah, yes, I mean, thing-
So, are you wanting us to just approve this budget the way it is or make a special motion?
Uh, well, let me finish going through, well, let me take any other questions. There's not a whole lot of changes to this budget other than that. So, I'll give you a chance to-
Who's, who's funding the other half of the maintenance guy?
A board.
A board?
He doesn't have their part.
And with the mowing contracts that we're paying the thirty, you know, the hopefully thirty-six thousand eight hundred, does that include mowing the A board's property as well?
A board has a line item under theirs that, for that part, to pay for part of that contract.
Would that be part of the contract?
Yes.
So, it would all come together as one big contract?
City Hall, we have a line for-
Who, who mows our sewer treatment plant? Who mows our water towers?
Yeah, public works, that's-
Why wouldn't you just include all that in the contract?
We could, but that would get, um-
Excesses of reserves.
Yeah, it's like, it's over, it's over thirty acres.
Yeah, but you said it was a better deal to contract it. You said you could save money.
It, it is.
Why wouldn't it be a better deal if you contracted everything?
Well, it is, but see, they're, they're making their revenues separate from the general fund and they have the staffing to do that, you know. So, for example, when they're not fixing water mains and sewer leaks and-
Well, that was our point exactly when having a part-time person. If, when we're in the mowing season, you could use them to do your maintenance over here and over there. And you could even have them dig a ditch and replace a water line if you need to, because that was-
So, you know, I mean, it's kind of like a, I guess it's kind of like the fire department. I mean, they're not always making fire calls. So, you could have them doing other stuff while they're, you know, hydrant, you know, hydrant testing, pre-fire plan, etc., right? But, so for water and wastewater, they have those crews there. So, again, when they're not, you know-
And it's, it's different having a pump station grass a little tall versus the park.
Yeah, yeah.
Pump station grass is tall. People don't notice because nobody's at the pump station. They notice when it's at the park.
Uh, so, one other thing, we are still going over the budget. So, we've got a lot of things going on. We've got the, uh, those electronic signs should be in this week. You see the pickleball court stuff going on. Um, security system should be installed within the next couple of weeks. That's all worked out. And the equipment's been ordered for that, got the POs for all of that. So, are there any other capital item requests, anything you want us to look at going forward?
I don't know if it includes this, but we got talked about putting a filler out to the community about the skate park.
About the skate park?
Yes, sir. I guess it was a community interest or?
Yeah, I've gotten a couple of quotes from some people and I have those. Once we get that survey back from the public and our park master plan kind of updated again, which is part of that grant he was talking about, is getting all that stuff together and kind of get it prioritized on those items that we've talked about over the last year or so.
And is there an ETA on the master plan or the, I guess with the, if we get that grant, like, what do we expect that answer by?
Oh, boy. Uh, yeah, if we get the grant, we were just now having our meetings to submit. I mean, I think RPR obviously runs slow. We're still trying to get Fairview. Street kicked off and that was last year. So, probably at least a year until we can start seeing any kind of, you know, knowing what, if we were gonna get that grant or not.
Capital expenditures, we discussed numerous times about either the cost or the engineering cost to continue sidewalk on Fourth Street to Fairview, I'm sorry, to Collis Drive.
I'm with that, yeah.
What other rule?
We also talked about the cost, the engineering cost or the possibility of meeting with text to try to connect our park to the existing sidewalk system in our city.
I did meet with them. So, the engineer was telling me that, uh, in fact, I think it was the, the last time he was presenting at the Chamber lunch. They're, they have some programs that they work, you know, with cities, uh, you know, to do that type of stuff. And there's some grant money available for that, so.
So, how do we start that ball rolling to help you guys see what's available for us?
Yeah, so, I met with him and he said he was busy on this twenty-two eighty project. But, you know, as soon as this gets kicked off in full swing, I go back to him and meet with him, see what we can do about the sidewalk. I hope, you know, I had hoped to do it in conjunction with the twenty-two eighty resurfacing something, but it's a shit to sale. So, I have to come back to it.
So, can we put a capital expenditure number in our budget for engineering costs for that? I don't, I'm asking everyone, I don't know. We've talked about this as long as I've been on the board. I mean, I just don't know where to go with it now, I mean.
Well, give me a chance. I got, I got the pickleball courts, we got the-
Yeah, we're not complaining, I'm just talking.
Got the security stuff, so we're, we're getting there.
And just an FYI, I'll talk about all that sidewalk. When we, we're about to, hopefully within the year, level off the eight acres outside the school that we just purchased right by the new development. And that is gonna be about the three-eighths of a mile walking drill. We conceivably may put that in when we ground it because of cost savings. If so, that'd be a perfect time to tie any sidewalks into that that would allow us to, so we're thinking sidewalks. No, we're about to put something in like that problem within a year.
Okay, I have one and it's just a little thing, but I don't know it's the CIP, but it is sort of like a thing to spend money on. But we have this little memorial down by the Sonic. And it's right in front of the gas meter. And I can't believe we haven't been in trouble about that. But I'm wondering if we could put a memorial bench on the other side of that little sidewalk with a plaque on it in memory of this situation and get rid of that. And-
Don't we have a public sidewalk right there?
There is a public sidewalk.
Four concrete for the bench there?
In the side, in the middle of the sidewalk?
No, off a little bit.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm asking, if we can do that, put a bench there and maybe put a plaque on it.
Because if it's in our easement, do we need Sonic to keep our easement?
Yeah. I don't care which side it's on. It just, you know, I, I, every time I drive past that, I think, I can't believe- Yeah, and that's still there and something more permanent. And I know we have somebody in the audience who was a part of putting that in place and, and perhaps if we went to the family, they would really appreciate that too, that we want to do something permanent.
Be a good way to clean that up.
Yes, yes.
Do we have any money in our budget for the park on Fourth Street called the Pocket Park?
That is a budget as part of the mowing.
Of the mowing.
As far as the mowing or?
Well, no, I'm talking about, let's say, let's say we say we want to make-
Oh, yeah.
We want to make a doggy park out of that. We need to put concrete park in there.
How many slots of parking? How many handicaps?
Looks like we got about sixty-eight minus engineering for the sidewalk minus looking into that memorial. That can't be too much. I don't know what the, again, these ones are. Yeah, so I mean, there's, you have some room in there, you know, if you want to do something in the pocket park.
Well, it would be nice that, you know, it sits there. I know there was a man at the last city council meeting who would like to maybe make it into a community garden. Well, I can see all sorts of issues there. We've got safety, we've got, you know, insecurity, we've got, who pays for water, we've got vandalism, there's-
If we put, if we put five to seven concrete parking spots on that, just go by square foot, that's like twelve to fifteen thousand dollars. If we put fifteen thousand dollars in the budget for pocket park, park twenty thousand.
With engineering.
Yeah, twenty, okay. Does that have to be engineered? Do you want that to be engineered?
Yeah.
Seriously, Don, does that have to be engineered?
And there's water there, you know, it's-
You said there's a twenty thousand dollar threshold.
What do you mean?
Twenty thousand dollars or more, then it pretty much kicks off and has to be engineered.
Well, then we need to make that nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
All right, yeah, we'll look, we'll look at that one. Pocket park, parking, we're gonna build that into the budget.
And maybe from that, that can spearhead a doggy park or a fence around it or something.
There's a green park.
What'd you say?
Just a green area, especially come out walking trail around.
Stroke parking. So, my dogs are my fur babies. I'm a dog person. I would caution y'all on dog park.
Why?
Because you have to take care of the waste continuously. And it does, there, there's a lot of, you, you can't simply put up a fence and have a dog park. Kind of went through that with Burleson and Horseshoe. It was just kind of shocking the amount that it took to, uh, to make that dog park. And Burleson is crazy, right? So, there, there's a lot that, that does have to be done as far as runoff and waste management, everything else for the dog park.
We could just put a walking trail with a couple of benches along the trail.
Yeah, yeah.
I like that. It's a good idea. Keep it simple and make-
They want to walk their dog, they can.
They can frame their little-
Just don't call it a dog park. Item six-eight-eight-three under city services. Last year, did we get charged for the financial director, the scheduling clerk and the city secretary? Is that on our budget last year?
Yes.
Our city services, that was in there last year, your, your expenses and the city secretary's expenses, was that in last year's budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Absolutely.
What is trade days under community projects?
Yeah, well, something that happened once or twice, kind of like in conjunction with Antique Alley.
Okay.
Yeah, they, uh, sort of gave them a spot of so many dimensions, and they could bring their little pop-up tent or work out of the back end of their vehicle.
See the motion to accept as presented, is that what we need?
Uh, sure.
Sounds like it, we didn't take anything off.
Yeah, yeah.
Did we add anything?
Uh, I've got some capital items, um, to go over with, uh, I'm going.
So, the motion needs to be to accept the budget with additions and subtractions?
Yes.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, although any more discussion? Although the paper? All right, unanimous? I believe that is the, uh, the D, no exec?
Uh.
All right. Um, so, we have the end of motion to adjourn? All right, all the papers, all right, you can, all right, thank you, guys.
All right, appreciate it, thank y'all.